Boy that, it is six o'clock and I will call the regular meeting of Thursday, March twenty first of two thousand and twenty four to order. I have asked this evening for Commissioner Clark to lead us in our invitation and Commissioner Swett to lead us in our pledge. If you would stand with us, please.
Everyone would bow their head, please. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for letting us have an opportunity to live in one of the most beautiful places in this nation. Lord, we pray for our first responders tonight. We pray for their protection. We pray that you put a hedge of protection around our community. Lord, we just ask that your blessings continue. We ask that the folks that are here tonight, that are here to hear us conduct the county business, everyone gets what they would like to hear done tonight, Lord, and give us all up here the the knowledge and the wisdom to do the county's business, Lord. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag at attention, hand over heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. And as I'm sure you heard, Commissioner Rofolsky is joining us tonight via Teams. He is out of town, but is taking time out of his work schedule to join us via Teams. So thank you, Commissioner Rofolsky, for doing that. We have the privilege tonight to make a special presentation and gonna ask Chief Finney, Chief Scott to come forward to to make these presentations and I have one to join with them as well, so.
Commissioners, for the record, Vinnie DeCristofalo, Fire Chief, Glen County Fire Rescue. On February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, at approximately eleven forty P M., Aaron Knowlton was awakened by his mother and told the neighbor's house was on fire and that the grandmother, Miss Sarah Thomas, could not get out. Aaron, wearing only a pair of shorts, ran to the rear of the home and climbed into an open window to the room where Ms. Thomas slept. Aaron attempted to close the door to the room to stop the spread of smoke. At this time, Glen County Police Department K nine Officer William Duggan appeared at the rear of the home and tried to climb through the window to assist. Aaron handed a stool out to Officer Duggan to assist in the climb. Under extremely smoky conditions, these two attempted to pass Ms. Thomas out the window to neighbors and family. At this point, Glen County Fire Rescue Engine One arrived on scene. Lieutenant Joshua Johnson made his way to the rear of the structure where he found Officer Duggan and Aaron inside the home. Lieutenant Johnson forced entry into the home, confined the fire to the room across the hall by closing the door, and assisted with the removal of Ms. Thomas and ensured Officer Duggan and Aaron were safely out of the home. Aaron, Officer Duggan, and Ms. Thomas all suffered from smoke inhalation and were transported to our local hospital for treatment. Christopher Reeve stated, "I think a hero is an ordinary individual who finds strength to persevere and endure in spite of overwhelming obstacles." Obstacles, sorry. Two of these individuals, Aaron Knowlton and Officer Duggan, exemplified this statement through their actions that night, and for this, we have called them to be recognized. Some will say Lieutenant Johnson was simply doing his job, which he was, but is the standard set by Lieutenant Johnson for professionalism, training, and dedicated dedication expected of all Glen County Fire Rescue members that enabled him to perform at such a high level that night. Aaron Knowlton is being awarded the Citizen Heroism Award tonight.
Thank you. And Aaron, if you would come forward, please, and I'd like to read this award to you. This is a Citizen Heroism Award, presented to Aaron Knowlton in recognition of your courageous and life-saving actions in the scene of a house fire in February twenty third, two thousand and twenty four, in Brunswick, Glen County, Georgia. The exceptional actions taken by you directly contributed to saving the life and preventing further injuries to another person. Presented on March twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, by the Glen County Board of Commissioners. It is indeed my privilege on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to say thank you for your heroism and for you being willing to put yourself at risk to save someone else. It's exemplary and we want to thank you so much for that.
Thank y'all for coming out. Yeah, I would have never thought I'd be waking up to what I woke up to that night. And what was going through my head, I couldn't even tell y'all because I was half asleep. But I've known Tori for a long time, so just by me knowing her, I'd put my neck out for her any day and help anybody I can. But yeah, God is good. All the time. Y'all have a good day.
Lieutenant Johnson? Lieutenant Johnson is receiving the Meritorious Service Medal. In the performance of duty while on a call, a highly unusual act performed under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to the life and limb of the nominee, he prevented the death or injury to a third party. Officer Duggan? Congratulations. It's truly an honor and a privilege to award Officer Duggan with our distinguished service award for the Glen County Police Department. Officer Duggan, William Duggan, formerly, for his extraordinary act of heroism on February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, in the action that displayed courage, gallantry, and exceptional devotion to duty under extreme and difficult circumstances. Truly an honor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I show up, make a difference, be a difference. That's my motto. And everybody that helped out, citizens alike, we couldn't do our jobs without the good help of the community. So thank you.
In the audience tonight is Ms. Thomas's two daughters, Ms. Penny and Ms. Alicia, and they reported that their mother is at home recovering at a family's home and seem to be doing well. Okay, so all family came out to appreciate. Thank you for coming.
As commissioners, we're often asked to do some different things, but of to have the privilege to recognize outstanding individuals such as this tonight is truly one of the privileges of being elected a county commissioner. So I think each one of you, for the families involved and everyone that had a part of this, is just indeed an honor to be in your presence tonight. Well, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Walter, we miss you. You'd be proud of me. I actually got the microphone on and off, so I practiced. We need to add a couple items to the agenda. Make a motion to add Agenda item number twenty three. Do I need to read that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That item is to consider approving a letter of support for the Rise Risley Project and the Rise Risley Incorporated application for an African American Cultural Heritage Action Fund grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation.
All right, let's let's take that out. That is a motion to add item number twenty three for the Rise Risley. Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. That will be added to our agenda.
All right. Also, I make a motion to add item number twenty four, which is consider approving the proposal from Easton Incorporated DBA Palk Timber for the harvesting and sale of timber at Fancy Bluff Park.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker to add item twenty four for timbering the five acre park at Fancy Bluff. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yeah.
All right, so we will add item twenty three and twenty four to our published agenda. Mr. Fendig?
All right, sir. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda in general business. And and the consent agenda for finance committee.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker. Are there any items, Commissioner, that you wish to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So that brings us down to general business item number twenty one. Consider approving the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Brunswick to provide twenty thousand dollars from the District Five Commissioner Capital Allocation Fund to the city for the Howard Kaufman Park Pool that's sponsored by Commissioner Booker. Any comments, Commissioner Booker?
I just want to thank the county staff for its work when we were running the park and the efforts that were made to ensure that the neighborhood you had access and the caretaking of the facility. And this is really in support of that work and this commission that has been very supportive of the city. This has been the best relationship I've seen between the county and the city since I've served. This is my twelfth year, so. I'll make and I'll make a motion.
Please, sir.
I make a motion to approve item twenty one as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Fendig to approve item twenty one for the twenty thousand dollar allocation from the District Five Allocation Fund to the Howard Kaufman Park Pool. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yeah.
So that is unanimous. Item number twenty two. Consider approving an amendment to the Pedestrians and Vehicle Safety Ordinances of Glen County. This support documentation for this item was uploaded in the March nineteen, two thousand and twenty four, and this is Mr. Fallon.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. The this really was based on conversations that we have all had and also numerous complaints and concerns and things that have come in from citizens and from business owners throughout the county, so this is countywide. So we tasked staff with looking at laws, ordinances from other localities to try and come up with some, maybe some best practices that we could consider for implementation here in Glen County. So this is an amendment and it's for your consideration. Really what it does is it gives code enforcement, the police department, and business owners more options to address solicitation.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Commissioners, is there any discussion on this item?
Just one comment.
Okay.
Just want to thank county staff. I think our citizens know that we've last year tightened up our ordinances to address solicitation trespassing, panhandling, and other issues like that, illegal parking overnight. We've gone through the year and seen some of the weaknesses and the strengths that we have in that ordinance. So your commissioners are working with our community to make sure that the standards of living and quality of life for all are working well and peacefully in our community. So I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And I make a motion.
Okay.
Approve that.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Clark as a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you. That is unanimous. Item number twenty three. Consider approving a letter of support for the Rise Risley Project and Rise Risley Inc.'s application for an African American Cultural American Cultural Heritage Action Fund grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And Commissioner Booker, do you want to add comment?
I think Ms. Hamilton will give an overview during the public comment period, but just want to say how important this project is. And again, the support that we receive from this commission that truly care about the most in need of this county. And that's the heart of the city. That's where we're most impoverished, but where we have the most potential. Families work every day, so there's nobody just sitting home, but just trying to make ends meet. And that's the support of this commission. We've been trying to do as much as we can, so this is one of those catalyst projects that we believe will help us fight poverty right on the front line. And you'll hear some of that when Ms. Hamilton does her overview. But I just want to thank everybody for their support.
Want to make a motion?
And I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the letter of support for the Rise Risley Project and Rise Risley Inc.'s application for the African American Cultural Heritage Action Fund grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker and a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yes, sir. Aye.
All right, so that is unanimous. Item number twenty four. Consider approving the proposal from Easton Inc. DBA Palk Timber for the harvesting and sale of timber at Fancy Bluff Park. This is something of an opportunity that arose to have this five acre park out on Fancy Bluff timbered. This park is a non-functioning park of Glen County. It's owned by the county. It used to have ball fields out there years ago, but today, unfortunately, it's it's used to buy and sell drugs. To be able to cut this timber off of there will open that property up so that it doesn't give a hiding place for transactions and the funds that will come from that sale of timber will be used to create. Nothing is definitive, but something like a dog park, a small picnic area or something, but it would be very open and visible to help cut down drug trade. We brought that to you and we'll present it tonight in the form of a motion. Does anyone want to make that motion or I'll do it?
No, I'll do it.
All right, thank you.
I would say that the county has a history of doing this because we had an old baseball field on Palk. That Palk Drive, but we repurposed a baseball field in Arco area to a thriving soccer field for the kids over there. And it totally began to transform the neighborhood. So doing this, I know this works because I've seen it. To that end, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve proposal from Easton Inc. DBA Palk Timber for the harvesting and sale of timber at Fancy Bluff Park.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on this. I live in that area and Commissioner Thompson as well, and we've heard from that community out there, the Fancy Bluff community, the last year about this certain area, about the drug activity, and I think this is a right step in the right direction to preserve that park and bring it back to where it was. So it just goes to show you, if folks make enough noise, commissioners will hear. We'll we'll get around to it, not maybe quick as we should, but this is a this is a win for District One out there with that area, Fancy Bluff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky?
Yeah.
All right, that is unanimous. Thank you. That completes our regular agenda. We have two people that have signed up for public comment this evening. The first speaker is Trent Hamilton, as Commissioner Booker mentioned, and Ms. Hamilton, if you'll come forward, state your name, please, for the record, and and you'll have about five minutes.
Kate Trees Hamilton, spelling T R E S H A M I L T O N, One Community Action Drive, Brunswick, Georgia. First of all, I want to say thank you to this commission for allowing me to come before you and speak. And I truly want to say thank you for the support of the grant opportunity that we have before us as it relates to Rise Risley. And so your letter really means a lot. Your support letter really means a lot, and it goes a long way when it is that we are submitting these grant applications. But one of the things, I am going to leave these right here for you. This is some information that I have as it relates to Rise Risley. But in essence, what I want to do very quickly is to give this commission an update because your support has been so forthcoming and it has been truly appreciated. And so with that saying, I want to take this time to say that over the past few months that I've probably come before you commissioners either in a formal setting or individually to inform you of the progress that we have made on our Rise Risley Project, which will be housed at eighteen hundred Albany Street. This location is significant in that three of the four buildings which sit on that five acre property are listed on the National Historic Register. Rise Risley sits in the middle of Census Track Eight. And unfortunately, Census Track Eight means that we have about forty eight percent of the residents there that live at or below the poverty line. But this project and this property also offers a glimmer of hope to many families and children that reside in that area who are struggling, as Commissioner Booker stated earlier, on a daily basis, trying to break the cycle of poverty. This property stands tall as the pride of this community because it is the site of the first school for African Americans here in Glen County. The Rise Risley Community Vitalization Project has made much progress. We have assembled a professional team of experts in the field of historic preservation and restoration. We have Architectural Collaborative, also known as Arco Lab, out of Athens, Georgia, who will be the architects and who will be the architects for this project. We have Garbage Construction, who will be the pre-construction contractors that also specialize in historic preservation and historic buildings. We have Ethos Preservation. They are out of Savannah, and they are charged with handling the historic tax credit package that will be submitted because of the fact that this property and these buildings are on the National Historic Register. They are also have been, they are the ones who have been, who will be doing our historic applications for our, for the grant applications for us specifically for historic preservation. They have, as stated earlier, and with the letter of support, the National Trust for Historic Preservation Grant in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the National Park Service African American Civil Rights Grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This project, because of the fact that it can really literally change the landscape of that community, is also in a designated opportunity zone, which makes it a perfect location for new market tax credits, which is a part which has also been factored in to our, into our funding stack as it relates to the completion of this project. And so, as you know, our attorney, our attorney for our organization, Ms. Rita Spalden, has been working diligently with the county attorney, Mr. Aaron Mumford, in trying to create the MOU so that the funding that you have graciously, that you have graciously supported us in, so that that particular funding can be transferred and then we in turn can really get down to ensuring that this project moves forward. One of the things I do want to ask of this commission as we move through the process of finalizing and completing a partnership between, of course, the city of Brunswick, Glen County, and Coastal Georgia Area Community Action Authority and Rise Risley Inc. I would like to ask that this board, that this commission, that you please keep in mind that the funding for the pre-development portion of it is direly needed. We are in need of that in order for us to pay our architects that we have bought on, to pay the contractors, to do environmental studies, and all of those pre-development works, items that y'all are so fully and well aware of because y'all have done a multitude of projects. So in closing, because I don't want to go with my five minutes, I do want to say once again, I thank you. I thank you for the support. I thank you for anything it is that, any questions that you may have, I offer them, please. I am available to each and every one of you in a meeting individually to give you that information, any information it is that you may need, any questions that you may have regarding this project. So, because what we are ultimately looking for is not only that this project moves our families forward and put them in a position that they are no longer in need of assistance, but also to put this city and this county on better footing as it relates to increasing and bringing up the standard of living within that community, which will ultimately be a financial return to this body. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Our second speaker tonight is Angie Jeter. Ms. Jeter, if you'd come forward, state your name for the record, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here in front of you, fine people and nice lady.
And Ms. Jeter, if you don't mind, state your name for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Angie, A N G I E, Jeter, like dare. Sure, my name is Angie, A-N-G-I-E, Jeter, like Derek, J-E-T-E-R.
All right.
I was here earlier this year speaking about the homeless crisis and the upcoming poverty level homeless situation. Well, it's going to do you worlds of good to know that I am now in that little boat. So there are insights that I can give you that you may not be aware of with all the new funding and new projects and things like that. Some of this may have escaped you. For instance, women who are not on psychedelic drugs or getting naked in a fountain or something like that, they are given and afforded opportunities which normal people, I say normal, that's not even fair. People who aren't on psychedelic drugs and get naked in a fountain are never, they never have access to. I've called every agency in this county. I left no less than six messages on Mr. Booker's phone with no return phone call. And there is no help. It's a round and round we go situation. You cannot get help. All the cutting down of trees, all the this, that and everything else is not going to help these people find a way to get inspiration, jobs and move forward. I've called every church. We did have someone that we are associated with. She has a hearing impediment. Because her chores at a particular place, which is run like a prison camp, that I stay at because they were not adequately conveyed to her, she was put out on the street. She's living in a broken down car. Just stop a minute and let's think about that. A broken down car. She's scared out of her head. Now, there are some agencies who have done their best with what funding they have and what resources they are allotted to help this woman. But for the most part, men get the funding. Men who have criminal history, men who are on drugs, men get the funding. Are you aware of this? I hope so, because this is your county. And this is really what's happening. And if you have any doubts, come down and see us. Have a five day old burger for breakfast at the well. Now, there are Christians who do. There are Christians who don't mind getting their hands dirty. They will absolutely do everything that they can. Saint Vincent de Paul, the well, they are doing everything that they can. But then there are those who wrap themselves in their biblical mantle and say, oh, so happy. I'm not her. How's that going to help? Does anybody have any questions for me? Is anybody curious about what really goes on? Sundays are the worst. They're the longest. Sundays, I used to love Sundays. Sundays are the worst. There's no library, nothing. There's no inspiration. I have three ideas I would like to give you really quickly for commerce, inspiration, something like that. Glen County Animal Services advertises on their website that they appreciate people who come down. They spend time with the animals. They walk the animals if they're physically able. They pet the cats. They love on the animals. It gives them hope, inspiration and insight. With busing, with some kind of transportation, this might be possible. It might be something that they could contribute back to society. The other thing is, what if we offered some sort of commerce to these people when that they were making their own products? There is an old basket weaving that has been passed down from generations. What, I mean, all it takes is some palm trees and know-how. What if we could somehow or another get the homeless to have like some kind of commerce, hope, inspiration so that they are making money? And then, you know, like we live on the shoreline. What if we sent, you know, those who are able to out to collect seashells? You can make chimes. We've all seen them, you know, down at the village, at the pier, everywhere else. I mean, we could have the homeless do this. It's not impossible. And it would give them hope and inspiration. I would greatly appreciate it if you would take this that would cost nothing, nothing. Think about it for a second. I'm not asking for attorney's fees. I'm not asking for market shares. I'm not asking for anything. I'm asking for a little bit of time, consideration and Christianity to help these people. Do I want to be here? I'm missing dinner. I get no food. But who's going to stand here? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment back there? May I make a comment back there? Ms. Jeter, I just want to speak that I know is the same voice of all the commission up here. All the issues that you've brought before this commission before and tonight, our commission is committed to take a progressive and active part in bringing wholeness to our community. The wheels of government are pretty slow. The rules are pretty significant. But you will continue to see this commission to step out and be a part of the issues of this community to which you speak. Yes, ma'am.
All right, that does complete our regular agenda. We do have need for executive session for the purpose of land acquisition. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go in the executive session?
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig. I think I heard first Commissioner Swett as the second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Commissioner Rofolsky? All right, I think we may have lost him at this point. All right, I think we may have lost him at this point.